Shall we begin?
My point of view is to reply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's hear our agenda. I move that we accept it as presented. And second, I'll let you, because I have more.
Okay.
Then we'll have a second and on favor. Any opposed, any abstained? The next select board meeting will be Thursday, the 6th of June, at 5:30 here at the town hall. First order of business, old business, a new date to meet an executive session.
So I heard back from Alyssa that Thursdays aren't good for her.
Did she have some, any other suggestions?
No, I figure I would speak to all of us before we decide on what works for us.
Is she, would she be available during daytime if we could set a note for her pen and pen?
It's been really hard for me. I've been transferred to quite different stores, so I'll travel on three hours.
Oh. So I need to do an evening. I'm wondering if in the evening, that is not a regular select board would be better. A, because Alyssa seems to be busy on Thursdays. And if we have regular business and an executive session, that seems like it would be a lot.
I don't have any problem with any of that.
And I'm pretty open to that as well. Don't mean to reach out to her if I think it might work for her. Okay. I guess not to have Tuesdays because we have meetings here on Tuesdays.
Right, so Monday would actually be preferred.
Monday.
Or not the first and third Wednesday.
Right.
So, yeah, but other than that, I can be pretty open. What's the earliest you could make a meeting, Kathy? Just so we know. Comfortable.
It would be really hard. I, on the 12th, I could do it. I don't know if the 12th is ever so bad.
12 is a Monday. I don't think I can do 12. 12 is a Wednesday.
You say the 3 hours hold?
Well, I cannot do the 12.
I'm thinking it's time to retire.
Where did they send it?
Naples.
Can we?
There's a day piece.
There's a calendar on the back of your.
The 10th?
Binder to Madeline.
I can't, I'm traveling the 10th to 12th, so I can't. Now I'm gonna do that.
Madeline.
Yeah.
There's a calendar on the back of your binder.
Oh, right. I'm looking at the big one because I can see it. It's 17th? I can do the 17th.
To the 17th.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, I could do that.
I can do that. I can do the 19th. Okay, let me, and let's have, let's pick a secondary date. Let's take the 17th because I literally am going for the 19th, the 24th.
The, she may not be available on the 17th?
We really should have an alternative.
So currently the 18th, which is the third Tuesday, does that matter?
That's a quite important.
The third Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're having a workshop. The 25th would be what then? I. You could.
You could upstairs.
You can meet upstairs. I can't, I'm not, I leave on the 19th and come back on the 24th. Secondary trips. I can do the 18th.
So why don't we offer the 17th of the 8th?
Okay.
If those don't work for her, we do have just some dates for July.
Yep.
So that we have some clarity when her availability could be.
Sure. So I guess the question posed is here. As we're entering into, we've got three legal bids to start in July. Do we just want to wait and start this with that or what?
I would rather not myself. This has been handling. We've had somebody working without a contract for years.
And Alyssa's already dedicated time and the town has spent money on it already.
I think.
So we have to get money.
But wait, we didn't know that there was negotiations happening on this contract.
Well, there are negotiations. Oh, yeah, we need to be clear with the community that it's not negotiations, it was just drafting a contract.
Significantly different than what the other one was. So, let me see what the 17th and 8th calls, and then we'll take it from there. I'll reach out to her.
Okay, new business. Ordinance restricting vehicle weight on posted ways. This is not the first time we have seen this. And. Steve, do you have any comments concerning, do you like it?
Uh, yeah, I like to have something.
Yeah. Have you read this?
Just a few pages, four pages.
Anything that should be added or taken out?
Well, I think that the weight limit should go up a little bit or have a. It says 43,000 pound limit, which is actually like 17, 34,000 pounds.
So he grows weight of 23,000 pounds.
That's an exception.
Yeah, that's just one. So basically at 17, time now. We could put, we could put that up and take them down, that's basically what they want. Because that'd work, but I figured like the Hill Road and stuff like that might be put around 56,000. And people won't be, you know, now you're gonna have to be calling the town hall and ask for permits to remove it all the time.
Right, it's, the no through ways, what, 53,000 pounds, right?
Correct.
And you want, you want that one to stay?
Yes. But do we have an ordinance for that?
Yeah, because this is just, this is posted.
Right.
Posted ways. And anything that go through them? Well, to prevent damage to town ways in the town west side, which may, damage which may be caused by vehicles of excessive weight to this and safety hazards. So, recovered.
You're coming, but you're gonna end up having any contact there. That's what John, he called you and asked you to get a permit.
Okay.
To do this, uh, to do a job down there. And it's, I think with the limit at 56,000, they can figure out a way to get the job done because they can put a bigger truck on it.
Okay. So where, I don't see where you're proposing putting the 56,000 pounds up there. I don't see it. I see everything's.
There is not. I asked if it was in there. It wasn't, it's not in there. I didn't see it.
So, not, so where are you proposing replacing the 23,000 pound to 56?
Yes.
That's okay. I understand. Well, just for Hill Road or for everything?
For all the roads.
Okay.
You know, that's just for the ones that we want to put on a limit. And the rest of them will be lower than that when it comes springtime and stuff like that. But if we just put a 56,000 pound limit on these roads without permission to move out the stuff down so we can monitor what gets damaged if they do get a permit.
So you're saying they should get a permit for anything over 56,000 pounds?
Correct.
And then in the winter, I'm trying to follow where this is going.
In the winter, when we post the roads.
Right.
That goes back down to 26,000 pounds.
23, 26 or 23?
23, whatever, et cetera.
And that's covered whenever a restriction expires or is lifted, the notice would be removed.
So in that contract, I didn't see anywhere in there that we get, for permanent signs.
Okay, pursuant, the notice shall contain at a minimum the following information. The name of the way, gross registered weight limit, period during which the restriction applies, the date on which the notice was posted, and signatures of the municipal officers or road commissioners. The notice shall be conspicuously posted at the restricted portion of the way in a location clearly visible. So, I think once we've, once we've established the, the, it looks to me like you can establish the height, the weight. The exemptions are listed as gross weight of 23,000 pounds or less. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to get a permit anyway.
Unless they, yeah, they would have.
Unless it was, unless it was winter road posting.
Correct.
But it doesn't.
No. The 23,000 pounds, okay, that's for usually your winter time, your springtime, when everything is soft. And that's what it says right on the, on the signs we have.
Right.
But there's a couple roads that just don't, won't take the big trucks chucking in, trip after trip after trip.
Year round.
Year round. So I would like to put a year round sign up there for 56,000 pounds.
And again, which roads are those?
Well, probably Spinal Road, Bridge Point Road.
Quaker Point?
Quaker Point. Basically.
I think you have.
Because none of our roads are through, are through way. Only through way road that we have is Hill Road.
Right.
So, I mean, you gotta go down there somewhere, you got a joggy around it, something, or something, to turn the big trucks down and stuff, and they just rip the stuff out.
Yeah.
David, you.
So we would put signs up, this was approved, right? Right.
Permanent signs.
And, no, not everybody's gonna follow one, but they're there. So if we do catch somebody, we can do something about it.
You can.
We have, we have that right there.
Right.
Which is great, and I think that would cover it all. I can set the limits and I can set a permanent sign up.
I believe that you would be authorized to do that. We, we ought, if we adopt the ordinance, it's to prevent damage to the town ways. So then we can authorize you to put in this appropriate signage for each of the roads we want protected.
Right, so everything that went on there, that's great. That's, we've got something to stand on.
So you just need the authority to put the weight limit on the appropriate road.
And I said I already got the authority. I just want to make sure that the 56,000 pounds will be good as a permanent sign. Those were mostly for signs that you hang up a base on it and stuff.
Right, right.
Like you go through, oh, it's safe shot, a lot of their roads that have two big trucks out. And it says, no, this, you can't go over.
Right.
56,000 pounds, anything bigger, you can't go.
So typically, if a road, if they need something down, then they can do it with less, smaller trucks.
Or get a permit.
Right, with a, with a straight job truck.
Right.
Or get a permit.
Or get a permit, like you see they're working on the power line over the road, which they actually could take a big truck there. But they're gonna be responsible, they could keep an eye on that crew that's working there.
Right.
And David, they do, will be responsible for the road.
Okay. I think as we grow, it's really important to do this.
I think we need a good lawyer, someone to print up the permit that words everything correctly. And I think we'd be pretty, pretty much be able to work with what we have to go there.
Okay. And of course, if we find that it needs treating, we can amend it at a legal date. Then I would move that we adopt the ordinance restricting vehicle weight on posted ways as presented.
Uh, I think we need to have the attorney look at it and add the 56,000 pounds to it before we adopt it. There's no sense of urgency to do it today.
I don't think we need that. We're making the 56,000 off the entire.
Right, I want to make sure the language, this is, this has not been reviewed by our attorney yet, as an ordinance.
This was based on, this, this was based on, on.
Looks like it took out that somebody else's.
Yeah, it's based on Pittsburgh.
Right, so it's a, it's a legal ordinance. It's not been challenged in Pittsburgh.
I think we need something we never had before. That's why we could never legally post our rules to get away with it.
And we're in the middle of building season, with people building their new mansions on the shore.
Yes, and they are building some monster places.
Um, so, so we have a motion on.
On.
It's some good.
I'll tender of adopting the ordinance as presented. All opposed.
Suzanne, I don't, I don't, I'm torn. I'm gonna abstain right now.
Business item two, invitation to bid, winter maintenance, Steve. For town properties. So we have a draft invitation. We've got time to take a look at this. Any comments?
My only comment is. There was some talk at one time, that maybe now we're at this point, that there was a road that the current person has his contract in health, wanted to go under.
Oh, the turnaround?
Yeah.
Yep. Where was it? It wasn't Sabine, huh?
No, it was Larry's group.
Larry's group.
So, Steve, can you just give us any input on what your statement is about that?
Well, that's, that's kind of a tough one because it's another road that should not even come a down road. And it basically dead ends right at a house.
Right.
And there's a house on this side, there's a driveway that we back into, which is, I believe is Bethview. And the trucks get off to the side and they come out something out, or they push the snow and the, and stuff. So I don't see where the town has any room down there to build a turnaround.
Right.
So I think basically it needs to be put in the contract that that road needs to be done with pickup truck.
Should that road be put into the small.
Should it transition to the smaller contract?
The small contract.
Because there is.
The school and the.
Correct, yes.
The historical.
Somebody has got a one-time tractor from down there. I mean, they're driving now with the same trucks they plowed these big roads with, and they got wings on, and they're trying to joggy van. And, you know, big, heavy snowstorm, you don't, it's.
We don't want that.
And I don't understand several complaints from the citizens down there of they're almost being told up. And at some point, someone may say to us, I want you to fix mine.
Well, that, that's gonna happen as long as these windows are gonna continue of the way that's.
Yeah, we don't have frozen, we, the town can't be responsible for, not, for unbroken ground, not in winter.
Exactly.
We have to be, are responsible for pushing right outside of the boundaries.
Yeah.
So.
So we, David, you have something?
I would think most contracts really are one-time or three-part-time practice to do that. I don't know if you have to put in all the other contract, because.
I agree too.
Much of the pickup.
Just less, less, less complicated?
Yeah, very less complicated, and, and the current snowfall guy we have now does have two one-time and pickups.
Well, most.
But they also requested not to have this road in.
Yeah, but they.
Well, I don't think that the things I really want.
They had the building to do it.
Right. So does that mean a guy putting the big truck away and having to go back with a little truck to do this, and would they be the last?
That means the contractor that gets that contract is gonna make sure they got a guy at pickup that will be out lot later on.
So when we, if we go that way, so when we do that contract, we need to make sure that is.
Well, the contract says, it says two one-timers and.
Right, but we need to put in that contract that they have to plow their.
Specifically listed by our road as a.
Right, if it's listed, they gotta do.
Right.
But with a smaller truck.
Right, yeah, that's right, you gotta run down.
Well, it's in his contract, and we're be using his smaller truck.
Right.
So I'm not sure. All I need to know is where the location is, and I can include it in the contract.
There, that's, it's where you want to go.
I, I just, I think it'd be just as easy just to stick it in the smaller contract.
I would, I mean.
Well, let's, let's see, that sand, salt. Sand, salt, other people get the.
But don't they sand and salt?
Yes, they do.
He doesn't, he didn't use our sand. He did not use our sand. He used his own sand.
And so.
But it's part of the contract that they, they pay for it, but they have sand and salt, and they use it.
But the smaller, the smaller contract does not use a town sand?
Yes, they do.
But I.
They just.
No, they don't.
You, we like how much money our project is getting now. I don't see where we need to take anything away from him. I think he just needs to do his job. He's done nothing but make money for the last six years, and lots of.
Well, maybe when you negotiate that contract, maybe it won't be as much.
Yeah, well, I don't see that. You have you seen it happen yet?
Well, the contract. The, the contract for winter maintenance for town properties, areas to be plowed, sanded, and salted. That person, whoever that person would be, would be, for the small, for the small, smaller lots. That person would be eligible to go pick up sand for the town properties.
They do. They have salt and sand for their disposal.
It was my understanding that he doesn't use our salt and sand because he goes to other properties that aren't town properties, and doesn't want to use our product.
Well, he doesn't have a way to hold it either. He'd be using.
That's, we are putting out a new contract, so the person, the issues of the person currently holding the contract is not our issue. The issue is, what's the most effective way for us to get this information out and get bids back?
So town of Pittsburgh, they leased their own road and put it in their ownership. Not where they, not having somebody who wanted to jump into somebody else's loader and use it.
Yeah.
So now you're looking at a lot more money that, I mean, you're taking that out of the contract now. The contract is pretty simple. We have, you know, you, you can't plow this whole town with two guys. You need more people.
Right.
So I, I'm stunned that I noticed there's two pickup trucks running around all the time in our town. You know, from the dad's power down. And then they got two big trucks. It's not like, it's just, they're tying a deal with their neighbor down there, so they need to do something for that water, not for the founder.
Right.
But we don't need to make new contracts now. I don't.
But I think we do. I think we need to make it clear, and whoever gets a town contract, what they will lose for equipment on there.
What the expectation is for that.
No, definitely, definitely. Speculations, and we might find a few home places the same way.
Well, Sabine Road has a tight turnout too now that.
They do, both of them.
That should be.
Both of the Sabine.
But it's. It's all in here, though. I'm confused by the conversation, because all of what you're talking about, it's in here.
Is it specifically listed as Larry?
Right.
So that's what we're talking about.
I mean, this says who provides the salt and.
We're talking about, we're talking about the other contract. That's why it's getting confusing.
Okay.
Well, and whether we're gonna transition from one to the one-piece app or.
So, Steve, your recommendation is to leave things as they are?
To leave things as they are, but when you go to plow a lazy road, you don't plow anything bigger than a 550 one-time truck.
And should that be the case for Sabine as well?
No, because it's Sabine, there's enough room to turn a six-yard truck around down that. We've made, we've redone that whole turnaround, and that's twice as better and bigger than it ever was.
Well, and by the mailbox, it went down, not down by the water, by the.
Well, that's still by your own turn to be up around. At least you got a place to push the snow off.
Yeah, direct down there to Grove and see how tight it is. It's just bad.
Oh, no, just because I, I know that there's.
Well, I just know if you start telling them, okay, you guys, you know, we're gonna do this place, that place, and that one. The biggest problem with the one-time, you drive all the way to Sabine, Sabine, you got three yards of sand. So by the time you get down there, you're usually three yards of sand, you can't do anymore with the town. So then you gotta run all the way back up town again to grab a different truck or re-look. There we go, it's just around the corner, and we had, people complained about the lawns and stuff, so it's gonna be easier for the picks up.
So.
So where does it get this in here?
It wouldn't end here. We go into the.
The contract.
The contract that killed Bernie Ness.
Right, and they'll get show of work on it, so we.
This is, this is the little one. This is the one that Rod Travis had. This is for the town property, it's not the town road.
Right, this is town office, fire department, west side school, recycling site.
All we got, shortly, is one thing, if they could give it to the smaller guy, that's where everything would turn around.
Right, and then, and then next B, it says what equipment is necessary. So my, again, I move that we authorize the RFP for those particular town properties. So, I hate to. Why? Why do we allow someone to get their own sand? And why aren't we asking for what we want?
Oh, why don't you question like that?
Why don't we have them supply the sand, and then it's not, it doesn't matter who uses it when?
Right, I'm just wondering why, this sounds like a provider is telling us what they're gonna do.
Instead of we saying what we want.
Right.
Exactly.
So why are we doing this?
The reason why we do this with our current contractor, and I have to say, for this situation that we're currently in, is because when he's doing the town properties, he then goes to other properties and does those at the same time. So if he was using our sand.
He would be using it elsewhere.
Right.
He would use it in other.
I think he brought that.
And that might be true with other contractors too.
Well, of course, I think we had that problem with the one. That's why I said we went down to two-thirds less.
So who's plowing, never mind, I already had that.
So, so this is gonna get confusing.
So I think, I think we, I think we can move forward with the town properties as presented, but I think we need to put a law item in the major plowing contract that stipulates Larry Grove.
I got.
That's not under discussion right now. Can we just deal with what we've got here, which.
So you're happy with this?
With which one?
With the invitation.
This particular property?
I'm not happy with what's going on with that property at all. I go up through my trucks to go do other waste, and I don't find them out.
Well, that's why we're doing an RFP.
That's why we're doing an RFP.
Well, I think you need to. I, I have it ready, I have it done, sent to me. I didn't know what to be able to.
So.
So there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor to accept the invitation to bid for the winter maintenance. Maintenance of town properties, which include the town office, the fire department, the school, the recycling site, the meeting house, and the Littlefield School. Do we have a second? We have a big sheet. I think it's pretty. Pretty detailed. Are there significant differences?
It's not significant, but I did amend it to make it clearer and to include the area around the dumpster and the sand blocks and. Compounds. Tighten up the language around, you know, having to clean up for meetings and stuff like that, just to make sure we're covered.
I think this helped, because all parking lot areas in the area in front of the bay doors adjacent to the state road should always be kept free of snow and ice from her. It does look a little bit more.
More detailed than it was.
So, it does say free of snow during the snowstorm.
And, and the other thing, um.
And that you should have a mark of which is on.
Um, actually, I believe there is Steve, but, um. The other thing, it says necessarily snows, blowers and shovels, I think that's important because I think sometimes, um, we have areas that aren't done because they can't get a truck in there, but you still need the walkways done.
Yeah.
Whether you. The contract to show for that following material, salt, sand, when the snow on town property has reached a depth of a half inch if the snow is wet and one inch if it is dry.
That's, that's a.
It's clean.
Is that completely? So is that completely?
I think completely.
So one, one inch in wet?
Well, if you've got an eight inch storm, you've got two, three inches an hour coming down, okay? There's no way anyone could be able to keep up with it. And we do get storms like that.
Yeah.
But, they, they should not have six inches of snow sitting in that parking lot and people flying in there to go to a fire or something.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking probably go more than four inches would be adequate.
Well, there, there needs to be some directions to where they start cleanup. Um, because if it's.
Well, cleanup, there's definitely a payout.
Well, if it's heavy snow.
But when, when do they start?
So the initial, the initial.
Yeah.
Plowing should commence when there's two inches on the road.
Right. Well, this isn't road, just remember.
This is the property.
Properties.
But two inches is, is.
See, the initial plowing should commence at two inches and then be maintained.
What would, what's the, what's the? What would you recommend?
It doesn't start at.
I would recommend to not have any more than four inches at, if I have an added time and make sure when the storm is over, everything is cleared, sanded and cleaned up.
Yeah, but we don't want four inches in our walkways. I, I really.
You get four inches in your walkway.
I thought you needed to change the language.
Yeah, so what, what we have is the requirement on four A is a depth of half an inch. At, uh, commence plowing material application when snow is half an inch of wet snow and an inch if it's dry, would you rather we went to an, an inch of wet and an inch and a half of dry?
That's still, that's, that's minimal, I mean.
I think it's small too, I think, I think you're, that you could, by the time they get to get going, you're gonna have two inches of snow.
Well, I think it's still an inch and a half depending if they go over the path of school, get back here, they could have another.
Right.
I think it needs to be wording during business hours or after business hours and different terms.
Yeah, just keeping like pedestrian safety.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's business hours also, I mean, it's not during a storm.
This, this is a, this is a complete, this is.
Well, we're complete.
This is where, when should the person start?
Yeah, start their.
This is the start. They're in their trucks, they're gonna go.
Yeah.
They show up with.
Three inches.
Three inches all around?
Yep.
Not in our walkways, thank you.
What, what if we have?
Well, that, that's where it all comes down, you have a guy who property things, it's like, look at these chairs, every one of these are probably ready to fall apart. If you have their maintenance man that can shovel your walkway and everything else, you're not, you're asking for somebody different to plow your parking lots and shovel your walkway and keep it, that's two different people you're talking about there, but you're trying to squeeze it into a bottle.
Right. And a half inch of wet snow can happen every twenty minutes.
Yes.
So I think that's a ridiculous low number.
You understand, people that look at that and they're gonna hit you or they're never gonna do. This is not a counterbath, you, you know, I thought walkways were the storm, storm, storm.
Can't we, you're in a bath, you have the person on the property in front of them.
I mean, I'm just trying to be realistic as, as a business owner, uh, you know, that goes out and does this kind of work. And if you, that's just asking for way too much.
I like, I like your idea of business hours and not business hours, actually.
Now, if you're wrong, like, sorry, this law.
We're already in here too about when we're open and when we're not. Um, when?
Two inches.
Snow will be plowed, assault and or winter sand will be used as needed during the storm to keep town, town properties open to pedestrian and vehicular traffic, to prevent bonding of snow and ice and to provide good service upon which to operate. That's the, that's the completion. So that if, if we have a storm that's coming up, four inches of snow and the office is still open and one of us frail older people still needs to.
Right. If this happens, I, I thought Rogers and Sanders.
Yeah.
They want that whole parking lot bare at all times with sand.
Must keep you on the track of paying.
Yeah, so we have a guy basically sitting right here all day.
And they're paying dearly for it.
And that costs him three thousand dollars a snowstorm.
So how, how do we make sure that the town hall walkway is clear?
Well, you, um, I'd have to say the people that are working here, if I have to go up and shovel and push it and fill some salt down. I mean.
That's where we kind of store.
Yeah.
They have to.
And that's what they do down at, down at the hardware store too. You've got a certain couple of visitors, you know, if it's bad out there and you're anything, you can't crack, you go out and do something. You work for them.
Yeah, but we're not gonna do the parking lot.
I'm talking about the parking lot, I'm talking about the walkway. So I think, I think we should, the contractors should commence plowing and material, salt or sand and salt, applica- application arms where the snow of the town property has reached a depth of two inches, I said it. Do you guys realize?
A little too much.
Yes, I don't think they are. So that's why.
Or three, or three inches, I would say three, I would say, I would say it has reached a depth of three inches during business hours.
Right.
This is two inches. But I say three inches during business hours.
I like your idea.
And four inches after hours.
Well, I, I, but business hours, I agree better with two and four.
Two during business.
The two, the two.
It's gonna be high, but if you put it in there, they'll try to make better patterns. I don't think it's worth three or four, they, they got a couple of days, we've got a schedule, so.
So you're recommending two and four during business hours?
Two during business hours.
Four after hours.
Okay, I'm gonna throw a curve ball. Do we have to put any measurement at all? Or can we, or can we simply say must keep clear of snow?
I think you need a measurement. We, we need to hold them accountable to a standard.
Right.
It's, because we don't, we will end up having nothing done.
Then we have.
I would say two inches of snow in it's wet and ha- and it's dry. What's, is there a difference in wet or dry?
Well, yeah. It's, it's quite a bit.
One's slippery and one isn't.
Well, but I'm gonna say.
Have you ever been stumbled?
Yes, I have.
If anybody goes out and they can't walk across two inches of snow, they probably shouldn't have gotten their vehicles. Because what happens at that town hall should not be that poor.
Unless I didn't register my car.
Well, you know.
There's always tomorrow.
Exactly.
I mean, if there's an accident, you know, they register your car.
This is a small town, I'm trying to.
So how about this regiment where the, reach a depth of three inches of snow during business hours, regardless of wet or dry?
Yeah.
Is this specific to town hall?
All properties.
Well, they don't need to do Littlefield School.
Right. Or the meeting house.
And if school, if school's closed, they don't have to close the sun, I think.
Well, that's, that's, that's a business hour.
Well, if school's closed, you're closed.
That becomes a business hour.
Business hour, usually.
So, during, during business hours and four inches after hours.
Excuse me, I know a curve ball.
Yes.
Are you taking into account the fact that sometime you rent up the fire hall for other organizations? And it would, would, you know, would they know that it's business hours? And on a Sunday afternoon, the quilting group or something?
I would suggest that the fire station be considered always open because they do have to respond at any given time and other C and P can stage there, it's hard to keep that clear. Because I think they say, oh, town hall's closed, we'll get to that whenever, and that's.
So, when, so, is it, what is the concern, town hall and not schools and the fire stations open twenty-four seven, what's?
I would say if they're, if they're open, you know.
The school.
They're all part of it. That's why when they go with four inches, they, they gotta get cleaned up no matter if it's open and not.
So then send a business location in the town, any, any facility.
The town could be reliable.
So, so three inches during business hours and four inches after hours, period.
Yeah. I like that a lot.
And then they can, and. Okay. I think a half inch is too small.
A half inch, a half inch, a little bit less.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Three inches of snow during business hours and then four inches after hours.
At some point, I think we try to fix every scenario. And people need to get back to common sense.
Yes, they do. They need to go move the habit up that way because, I mean, they don't even use sand or anything on their roads like that.
For the purpose of simplification. Are we talking about this language as maintenance, uh, section four A?
Four A, yes, that's right how it is.
Reached a depth of.
Three inches.
Three inches.
During regular business hours and four inches after hours. It's regardless of wet or dry snow.
And not exceed. Not, the snow should not exceed.
Not to exceed. Four inches.
I would just say not to exceed three inches during regular business hours and four inches after.
Well, it says has reached the depth. You need to rewrite the whole thing, so we have.
So therefore saying that, you should have something there and sand as needed, you know.
It's right after that.
And that's what I'm saying.
We need, it was as needed during the storm to keep the town properties open to pedestrian and vehicular traffic. That's, makes sense.
They're gonna have three inches and they say the salt and the snow in their door as.
Okay. So. With the amendment to this as three inches during business hours and not to exceed four inches at any time.
No. It's, it's to reach a depth not to exceed three inches during business hours and four inches after hours. It's not wet or dry. The town property has reached a depth not to exceed three inches of snow during business hours and four inches after hours. You've removed the wet or dry.
Right.
Out completely.
Reached to depth not to exceed.
Not to exceed three inches during business hours and four inches after hours, period.
Okay, it should be four, four inches after hours, but it's clearer. Um, so, with those amendments, do you have those?
I do, so are you moving to approve with the amendments as presented?
Um, I, I am going to try again to move approval with amendments that we've just had a half hour. No, I, we don't have the editor. With, approved as presented with amendments as developed during this meeting.
One second. Thank you.
All in favor?
The thing is.
Any opposed?
We may not have it right, but we're working on getting it better each time.
The right one?
Clearer and clearer and clearer.
Something is better than having nothing.
So Steve, you can stay here, go for the next one, it's lawn mowing, you just wanna be part of that.
Oh, I gotta have something to say about that.
Okay.
What lawn mowing?
Right, you asked a question.
It was, very small, was done for Memorial Day. I did notice that. Um, it wasn't done before, but the select board, business item three, we will discuss the terms of and expectations associated with the current agreement for lawn mowing services. And you see in your packet, and the note, that the current agreement expires, um, a year from June thirtieth this year. So we are still in, we are still under contract. I think the question is, have we, are we satisfied with the way?
Absolutely not.
I think, I think you guys are gonna find out more people bidding now, there's more now contractors come out in the last two or three years. So I think you're gonna be able to pick, you know, what you want that now.
The expectation is that you complete your commitment to the contract, which is not happening.
Right.
You sign a contract, you perform the services, you were paid for it.
David, do you have a comment?
I think the contract has been breached many times. I would hope that the board could find some way to talk to some local contractors and don't wait another year.
I agree.
Look at the lawns out everywhere and had to call the contractor, the town, the road, the fire station. That's pretty bad. I, I don't think you should continue, you should.
And do we have an insurance policy for a million dollars from him as well? That should be here.
I'm just saying, there's maybe somebody out there who'll do a better job than this without much problem.
I agree with what David Hennessy just brought up, I think that the contract was breached more than once and we're not obligated to move forward under these terms.
So my suggestion was is that we let this individual know that we want to sever ties with him and set a in time when his contract will number in.
I think you just start trying to find some.
I mean, like, I agree.
The board can overrule the bid process, so if you find somebody, maybe who's in town who would do that. Talk to some contractors and just do it for this, this season. And then about March next year, or earlier, February, put it out to bid.
I agree with that. I don't think we're obligated to.
I don't think you have time to go for the full bid process and try and something, you just gotta find somebody.
How long has Joe Robinson picked us up for a year?
Who, who does the school? Whoever the person does the school would do this too.
I, I'm, I'm a fan of collaborating with some of the contractors who are doing stuff at the school, it's, it's the town. I mean, if we can get a better deal.
Do you know who does the school?
No, I don't. I know they changed it, because they want to sign this company.
Now, all I know is that the school did not look great at town meetings, so I would check out the work before we go in with them.
But you could also just talk to Joe Robinson, other contractors in town and find out. I don't think you wait and go through the full bid process because look at the lawn.
Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering if we just have Christine, uh, love the well there.
Oh, you should do that, you should.
Well, could we just, we just.
You should do that.
Can we just find out new checks in there for him? There's, look in that purple folder.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if there's, his contracts.
Can I say that for a moment, a second?
Starts, ends on June thirtieth, so do we want to end his contract on June thirtieth this year?
Yes.
That's up to the board.
Yes, because then we're done paying him.
That, at least, if you tell him tomorrow, gives him thirty days.
Yeah. I, can we just pay him? I wanna pay him thirty-three hundred dollars, which is due, I mean, we've been paying and he's not been performing. I think we need to terminate the contract tomorrow.
So Christine, can you give, can you give him notice tomorrow?
No, I will not be here.
Monday then. Can we send it, can Julie send an email tomorrow, so it's timed in a thirty day window?
Can our chairperson let him know it's being?
I can do.
I will be in the office on Tuesday and I can do it then.
I think we should do it tomorrow while it's still in.
Just so we can do that thirty day.
I agree.
Do we need a formal motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we're all ready before we make a motion.
Here's the.
I think you should send an email to anyone.
I just think it's better done by the town representative, yeah.
It has to be.
Rather than an email, I, I think, I don't know, I'm still a proponent of the.
Do we even know if we have the email for him?
Yeah, we have an email.
Perfect.
And he does respond to his email, or he has in the past, I'll say.
So can you send it this evening before you leave?
If. Yeah, I would like to know specifically what you would like me to say.
Dear Mr. Wallace, we are terminating your contract effective immediately.
With that, you're not, you're not, no, I would like to do the June 30th.
Even though he's done a poor job, I think.
He's gonna be paid, we're not renewing next year, you'll be paid through this calendar.
It starts, right, which would be June 30th.
Right. So I said, we're, we're, cancel your contract effective immediately, you'll be paid through the end of your.
But what if we don't find anybody and he does want at least one lawn?
He may.
You'll find someone. If not, I will not find a law, I will not.
There's been months that he hasn't done it.
I'll join you, Steve.
All right. And won't you pay him through June 30th?
Actually, we're, we're terminating your contract effective immediately, we've paid through your second year commitment.
Okay.
Of ending June 30th of 2024.
Okay.
Thank you for your services.
And if you can't find somebody, I'll not vote for free.
So that's on the.
This is too little.
Hey, no. I'll do, I'll.
You have one down, Dave.
That's fine, I think you do that part, well, it's a good idea, okay. But still, I think he also deserves a phone call, it's the least we'll wait to do.
But if we do it today, instead of doing it today. It's the 30th.
And it's a writing.
And it's, but today's the 30th, it's one year, I'm saying. Yep, and it doesn't have to be. Isn't it, just thank you for your service.
Should have happened. Okay, because we've terminated actually for breach of contract.
For lack of performance, which is a breach of contract.
So. I think we need to, I think we need to make it clear that, um. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we. We now void, um, the contract for our lawn mowing services with Mr. Wallace. As of immediately, and we will put it out through the end of. Six, 2024. And that Christine sends him a letter and Madeline follows up and write phone.
Christine sent a letter this evening. And Madeline follows up personally via phone.
Perfect. Question?
Do you want to mow through June?
No.
Nope.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clear out.
No, no, he's done as of tomorrow, or today, whenever you get.
And if you're not going to be in the office tomorrow, and we'll also be up Monday. Would it facilitate things if I made calls to some of the landscaping companies that are in town?
If you're interested in doing that, that's fine, I can do that, otherwise I'll take that, I'll say.
If we can find somebody who has some time in their schedule. Be a relief. Um, and we. If we're chatting about this, um.
Do we need to rewrite the request for bid?
No, well, we do at some point.
At some point, but we're not going to have to do that.
No, no, okay, I just.
We do need to do it though, because it's not clear.
Right.
What the contractor needs to do, so we really have to.
Clear that they should be going, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a motion.
So there is a motion and there's a second.
You seconded it?
I am seconded. And, um. All in favor?
So I do just have a.
Yes.
So it says here that. The person who mows needs a con, uh, liability contract for a million dollars.
Do we have that?
We still, we're gonna need that.
Will, yeah. Do we have this as my question?
Julie is the only one who knows, so he, um.
So I think if you call somebody, maybe. Just give them a copy of this for now.
Quite a question about how much you like.
Right. I think 500,000, pretty funny.
Yeah, it seems excessive.
Yeah, way excessive.
That's.
That's.
But that's the same as a lot of money you have to have.
Yeah.
You know.
Then you run somebody over with a lawnmower.
Or he runs over himself in his family suit, it's probably just as well. Um, I'll just ask various people how much insurance they have.
But we need to be listed on that. Cause it covered it. All right.
Oh, that's right, you got Sospansky or Jordanson?
Sospansky's out. Um, Sospansky's done, done, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jordanson, who just moved here, is probably more than happy to, how about the town?
I'm not sure if he does mowing or not. I know we need to have standard. Not a bad sort. But there is a lawn mower.
Yeah.
You got a lot of these together, a lot of different people.
Yeah.
And if you, if. Hell, food department has that, at, at the lawns. So I'll come down and I'm bored and do those hang them, whatever.
Wait another week and hate it.
Hard to do in the cemetery. Have to get really small. Okay. Business item four, ATV trail use permit over hill ATV riders. Um, and. We have this proposal and the term of agreement that is prepared, starts today. And these are the same parcels they've been using, I presume?
Yeah, I kind of facilitated this for over the hill ATV, we've done this in the past, it's the same parcels. The only difference is the start date is today, but the end date is blank. So you ladies can choose, usually it's for a year, uh, some, um, agreements are for three years or for six years or indefinitely. So I wanted to give you guys the option of. How long, I asked the ATV club and they, they told me that's it, like, some do three years, some do six years and some are just. Until canceled, so.
So my concern is with indefinite is.
Yeah.
Whether something grows up on these.
Yeah. I'm okay with three years.
They have been good stewards, as far as I'm aware. Of the trails.
Just for the, uh, the town's land across?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically by Austin Road and CMT.
I'm not opposed going to. I think to do June 30th of 2027, take it to the fiscal year.
No problem. Okay. So the motion?
I move that we. Extend a contract for the ATV trail use permit to June 30th of 2027. With all other provisions the same.
We have second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any votes?
Would you all like to sign it, there's one signature line?
Did you put the date out?
Yes.
I tried to write some.
You did. You did good.
We don't have a law name.
All right, well, it's true. We have an election clerk to elect, to appoint. We have. New business item. To, um, appoint Aaron Park. As bell clerk and election clerk. So moved. Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Business item six. Stay with the primary election warrant presented in your packet. I move that we approve the warrant for the election to be held. On June 11th. Primary at West. Second miss? Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes?
While you're signing away, I will remind those viewing at home later that, uh, absentee ballots are available through next Thursday. Sneaking right up on us, so. Get them in.
Miss the dead morning, you have to come vote in person.
We like that.
Always, always a good experience.
Can we see that?
Oh. Sorry, I missed that one. It's one time we can talk to Mr. Sanders. All right. Old business. Acting as the board assessors.
Oh, we skipped two items.
Oh.
Did we?
Number seven.
Oh. Where did I go?
Say, Boston Town Office.
Oh, Boston Town Office. I missed that. I don't have it.
Well, there's no, there's not any.
I was, I was going by the packet on the.
Me too.
Sorry. Uh, you should call Boston Town Office.
So I think there, there's, um. I, I understand that there's a benefit to having our answering service, but it's very impersonal to the community. Um, and I think it should ring to the desk and if they don't answer, after somebody rings, it goes to voicemail versus. Just flying into an extension. And it's, it just, I never seem to get anybody live. And I think that's not how we want the town proceeding.
Could be that their people are busy in the office.
It can't be that every single time I call it goes to voicemail. I, I disagree that that's an option.
I totally do too, I.
Well, it depends who you're calling.
It doesn't matter, I'm trying, I go through the whole list and try to get, if I can't get you, get calling.
What time are you calling?
All different times.
And not once have I given live first.
I, I, I don't like, I don't like, I like, I understand the benefit of automation, but it turns our town to a very personal experience to the community and I don't think that's. How we'll proceed.
And we're a small town, I don't believe we're a big city, and I think those changes were made without any discussion here.
I agree with that too.
And I don't, didn't like it then and I don't like it now.
How can it be set up so that people can continue to work and answer phones when they're busy?
They are not that busy now, and if they are extremely busy.
We don't even. We don't even have their, their response is automated, it's not even the person who is.
Right, we haven't updated that yet.
But it's, but it's so, but it's been here for a year and it's just, it's impersonal and it's not, I think it's, I, I'd like to go back to what it was. I think, I think it's very impersonal and our town is a community and we should represent it as such.
How would, how would the system, how would you change the system?
I would have to find out how we change the system and what we can do.
I think you just put it on, uh, D and D, do not disturb function on the phone. And so if you're in a meeting or you're doing something, you can put it on D and D, but when you take it off, you're like, oh, it rings and it doesn't go to voicemail.
Well, that's what we do. That's, that's.
Then, then it's sitting in D and D all day long because I don't get the whole body.
Well, if, it, sometimes it depends who you're calling, if you're calling John, for example, he's often not here.
That's, it's, but it's everything.
Well, I, I'm just giving you an example, one of the features of the phone system. That John, for example, really likes is that when he's not in the office, we put his phone on do not disturb. Somebody leaves a voicemail and it goes directly to his email and he can get it wherever he is. Um, and then he can return the call that way. So then we can also keep those voicemails for premium of access, which is. A feature that we really appreciate. Um, so. For somebody like John, it's beneficial, so we will have to figure out how we can continue. To, instead of taking a message for him. To make sure that the, his messages get to a voicemail, so that they automatically get sent to wherever he is.
And that happens all the time in businesses, I just. If somebody's, go ahead, David.
That, that shouldn't be too difficult, this day and age.
It shouldn't be, it's just.
And I think if you. If you send rings. Three times, it's not instantly personal, then let the phone pick up or whatever, three or four rings, then let the machine pick up.
But you could also, there's also if there's someone who could, you could, i- if you hear someone's phone ringing and it's ringing and ringing, you could actually. Pull it to your phone and answer it as well, if there's something going on, if someone's trying to reach out to the town.
I, I think you.
Cause we didn't have extensions before, it was one number.
But if you make.
And then you go put to.
If you just make it simple, if it rings four times and no one picks up in the office anywhere, it goes to the machine.
Well, I think this is simple and it's something that we can make changes to, we can definitely pick up other people's extensions, that's not a problem. Um, if it's on do not disturb, you're not aware that it's ringing. If it's off, do not disturb, we can pick up somebody's extension.
We should.
So.
And then you say, oh, let me transfer you to, cause you transferred a voicemail and not to an extension, and their voicemail should be their voices. Also, more personal.
Does, um.
But I think it should come, I think it should be picked up by generic, by people in the office.
Does, um. Who set up the phone?
Oh, the company just set up the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and it's the person's voice.
Yeah.
From the company that set up the phones, and we just haven't made, haven't gotten to.
Getting that, okay.
Yes.
So, so, so from a protocol path forward, is the phone gonna be answered while there's. Regular office hours and then transferred to voicemail, is that, what's the protocol gonna be?
The short answer would be yes.
The lo, the long answer is that there are times when the office is busy, so those calls, when there is not. Anybody available to take the call, then that should go to voicemail.
Right.
Is there a way with our system so that Julie has her own message?
Yes, I have an example of being. A selectman and say, I have an emergency and I can't reach anybody from the town, it is very, very frustrating. And I have someone, and it's only happened, but it's frustrating, it's been other times that I've tried to deal with them. And nobody answers, so I almost feel like we need this emergency, and it probably only happens once or twice a year, but I need to be able to reach somebody.
I think that, I don't, I think that the phone should ring and I love fear, who, who is the primary extension that goes to? And you can, if someone's not at their desk, you can transfer it directly into a voicemail. And they get their voicemail, but the primary function of the phone should be a live person on the other end of the line. When possible.
Well, I'm gonna tell you my experience, even though nobody here asked for it, I was the primary voice that answered the phone. And. That was fine, I definitely appreciate getting a live person when you call a phone number. Um, 80% of the calls are for Jonathan. And when I would answer and say, oh, let me put you through this extension, I would say it like that. And people would be like, well, is there a number I can just call so I can talk to him directly next time, because it is, the same people over and over again. They do not want to talk to me and they're not rude and it's fine, but they would prefer just to dial John directly. 15% of the calls are for Julie. And it's very difficult being the answering service when you are getting less than 5% of the calls, it's very time consuming. Currently with our phone system, they call John, I hear it ring, I know it's for him, I do not pick up. And then I hear my phone ring, because they get to me and they say, I'm trying to reach the code officer and I have to say, well, he's not in. So. I understand what you're saying and I, I'm fine with it, I'm just. Telling you the experience of the person that will be answering the phones. will be the town clerk. When we first got the phone system installed, I was picking up other people's lines, and I was the only person picking up other people's lines, and nobody was picking up my line, and I stopped answering other people's lines. We had this discussion very briefly a couple meetings ago, and I have to tell you, when my phone rings, it stresses me out because I don't want to get in trouble for not answering my phone, but I'm with a customer, that's the only reason I'm not answering the phone. And I know you guys know that.
But someone else should pick up your phone then, also.
Yeah.
If someone else happens to be in the office. And I got to tell you, recently, there oftentimes, there has been one or two people in the office.
And phone calls for myself, or for John, or anyone really, are typically very specific. And Christine can't answer a lot of my questions, and I can't answer a lot of Julie's questions.
But she can answer the phone and transfer to your voicemail as a live body, and that's about it.
I know that's less frustrating, honestly.
But at least it's for Jane.
But, you know, you aren't accommodating the fact that you want somebody to answer the phone. And every time you have to stop what you're doing, you are interrupting your productivity to do something just as satisfying a resident calling to ask a question or something. I don't think the way it's running out is a problem. I don't expect the phone necessarily to be answered. I think that they'll get back to me when they have the time to do it. But if you expect, you've got, how many people, three people in the office?
Yeah.
But if they walk out any time, one of them could be busy, one of them could be, oh, having lunch, you know, maybe not in the office. You're not accommodating a lack of productivity when you demand somebody stop what they're working on to answer the phone.
I'm not expecting Carly to stop addressing someone at the front counter. I think if Carly's phone is ringing, and she's handling a customer at the front counter, someone else should pick up that phone.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about somebody in the middle of trying to prepare something they're writing that makes sense. Or planning a schedule and stop now, but I'm doing the answer the phone, and then go back and figure out where I am again. I don't think that's productive at all.
We're a service organization. We, we report to our community, and I think, and I think it's important that we have a community feeling, and right now, our, our community expressing our opinion. Our phone system is...
Well, then, okay, I have a suggestion. Why don't those select people who think this is important take a stint in the office a couple times to see how it actually works so you know what you're talking about?
I've called the office, and I can't get...
No, I'm talking about you being in the office and answering the phone and understanding how it's working in the office.
I worked for the state for thirty-five years. I had over a thousand clients. But I was in the office, it didn't matter what I was doing. I was to answer that phone, absolutely, period.
Well, you worked for the state. I had my own business, and I answered the phone the best I could, and no one ever complained.
I, I think that's all we're asking, is best they could. But when I call here ten times in a month, and I can't get anybody, it's not okay.
I'm curious, because when you've called in the past and got me before this new phone system, it was before eight in the morning, and I'm wondering if you're calling in before eight and it's going?
No. And all I'm asking is that you spend some time in the office to see how it's actually working.
I've been here in the office sometimes, and sometimes there is only one person in this office, and there shouldn't be. This office can't be run by one person.
Well, guess what? That's the reality of it.
And the reality of it, I'm sorry, Christine, because you're not in here until nine, ten o'clock a lot of times in the morning.
That's not true.
It is true, because I'm down here.
That's not true. I come in at nine on Thursdays because I stay late.
I think what would help is saying, I've heard it's automated stuff, and I call it. I don't like it at all. Now, if I asked for John, I got John, and he says, yeah, I'm at the office right now, heard his voice, it would be a hacklot in there. If you have somebody's voice, you'd think it's a stupid robot.
Yeah, we couldn't do that.
But we haven't broken this for a year, why have we waited a year to do this?
Because if, if you understood the pressure that we've been under the past year of all of the work that's been going on, the meetings, the assessing drama, and everything else that we've had to deal with, Suzanne, we have not taken time to get in touch with the phone company to make these changes. It has been a long, a priority.
There is a small amount of time to address the public, Jane.
Can't you just make it simple? Let it ring four times, if they're busy, they're busy. And it goes to the machine. If you want a certain individual's voice on that, I'm sure that can be done, but they should be allowed time not to answer the phone if they're busy.
Right.
And let it ring three or four times. If they're not busy, they'll answer it.
And I would also like to talk about what prompted this conversation, which was a member of the public who attended the meeting at the fire hall and said that she couldn't get in touch with anybody, and nobody was returning her calls, and, you know. She was very impassioned about it. The fact of the matter was, I was not in the office when her husband called. He left a very constant message and didn't ask for a callback, and I did not call him back. And I also want to say that that couple has been in the office several times and has been extremely accommodated by Carly and myself to explain processes and, you know, go through filing for a payment and what the board of assessment review process would look like. And we have never turned them away, and we have been very open with them. Sometimes the information that you get from the public is, doesn't tell the whole story. And this board has a habit of not asking for the other side. And I want to be very clear that when we get a voicemail, we return the calls.
But Christine, I know I've mentioned it more than once about the phone system. I believe I've heard Kathy mention it more than once, and it was way before the general public also commented. That was probably the straw that broke the camel's back to our frustration on the impersonal level of the phone service, to be frank and honest. This is not my first concern with it that I voiced, and I think it's, it needs to be, and I can't believe we waited a year to make a personal message.
We have, we have had the discussion. There doesn't seem to be anything new. You can see to the updating to have people, to see what can be done to have people's actual voices on the voicemail. We can agree on, at my house, at my house, we go for, my phone picks up after four rings, which is a very fast time, at least on my phone. I can't always make it from the kitchen to the other end of the house where the phone is.
Ma'am, I feel like you're dismissing Kathy's and my concerns.
No, I'm not.
But you, you just did. You just dismissed what our concerns were.
I was, I...
I could personally like, and I don't know how we can do that, an emergency contact number. I don't, this probably doesn't...
One of the times was, and I did get a hold of you, Christine, but after the fact, when a police officer calls me and tells me I have to go take control of this horse.
Yeah.
And I didn't have a clue what the hell I was supposed to do. So it would be good to have somebody else to reach out to. Yes, Steve, it was yours.
Well, I think in that case, that's when you use my cell number. I mean, that would make sense to me. I mean, if I have to be at the office for some reason.
I did answer that time, so I'm just wondering, is there some, or is there some way we like you, you know, in this emergency, maybe a 911 after, I don't know, on a callback?
Yeah.
I don't know, I would just like something.
Okay, can we figure that, can we figure that out?
Yeah, we can explore that.
And it probably wouldn't happen more than once a year.
I have, yeah.
It is a cow loose, sort of.
Well, I just had a conversation with Deputy Schofield, and that shouldn't be happening anymore.
But I mean, it's just those weird things that come up that you don't have a clue what, and I didn't know what it was.
I didn't have enough information or hunting skills.
But I mean, when they call up, you're like, you're the selectman, you will take control of this horse. It's like, what?
If you just said, whoa, whoa.
But I mean, those are the times where it's like, what? You're thinking, what should I be doing?
Get carried.
Who do I reach out to?
Each one of them should be taking care of their horse. Nothing to do with you.
But I mean, those are the things you like to bounce out. And when you get, I said I will reach out to Montana Administrator and get back to you, and I give us, I can't reach her, and he's, well, I don't can't, come get this. And it's like, what am I supposed to do?
And John's cell phone, you don't have to. Because John is another good backup, you know, cell phone.
Yeah.
And that's where cell phones are going to have to come in.
And then, it's, they're not all emergencies, so I can somehow let you and John know it's an emergency.
Well, if he gets, but if he gets his, if his voicemails go voice to text on his email, then he can see, I mean, that's...
And that's why I've called John. Or Todd, because Todd's in charge of animals.
Well, yeah, but that's one of the issues, that's why he's not available.
So...
We know what to do, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, so just, that's my biggest thing is, right?
Right, why not get some help?
It's, we may...
It's time, ma'am, it'll be you, you're going to help me a lot, so.
That one's tough. Yeah, horsey, horsey, horsey.
But I can't wait to hold it, that's what I think.
I've had that same incident with a car, a modern deer.
Yeah.
I said, I'm going to give it a road trip, and I said, but I'm not a freaking animal control. And I, and he said, well, you need to take care of it. I said, no, I don't. You need to take care of it, you would have got money.
And you just threw out, you brought a selectman, it is your job.
Right, and they tried to do the same thing with me.
It does say that in the law.
I was going to say, that's not statutory.
That is actually in my county administrators' report because another incident came up, we had a long conversation about that.
Okay. All right, so.
Are we setting?
Are we set administrators' report?
I think so.
Or are we, I, the staff will discuss and come up with a, with a solution that will continue to provide the service that we wish to provide, and allow the staff to complete a task in which they are engaged. Because I don't mean to make light of it, but I also know that according to, this was twenty years ago, people working in human relations, talking about employment, if you're billing for your time, you bill for fifteen minutes for every time the phone rings. So Jane's point about interrupting a project that somebody's working on is also extraordinarily important. I don't want Julie, for instance, to be distracted when she's toting up the money. And I don't want Carly to be distracted when she's figuring out how to put an election together. Those things are vital, and they have to be done accurately.
Well, this man does that. Occasionally, it could be two staff members that are popping through each other trying to figure out how they're going to do something. Some person walking in might think they're just shooting the breeze. They don't know what they're doing. And one of the things you need to do is indicate our confidence in Suzanne.
Yeah, and, and recently, you know, like, for example, when Carly was on vacation, John was out of the office the same week for the entire week because he had fire department stuff to do. Julie and I were here. If Julie was with a customer, and I had somebody in my office, the phone did not get answered. And I think that was maybe a time when people were calling and not able to get somebody, but that's the reality of our capacity.
The key word is patience.
And the things that we do in this office, you know, sometimes nobody's available to answer a call. And it's going to be infrequent, but it will sometimes happen.
But we can't use it as a crutch, you know?
I agree.
And I think so many of the examples, things, they use the crutches.
Well, it's a whole new world that...
It is, all the way around.
And the rule key would be to have a receptionist who answered the phone on Julie all the time. Probably haven't had one this year. Let's see, county administrators' report.
Okay, Spirit of America award. It's time to choose an army again. If you have any ideas about who you would like to nominate, we have until June 30th to select somebody.
Super volunteers. For people watching at home, we are open to suggestions for nominations to honor a volunteer in town. And we'd appreciate having some suggestions because it's an important way to honor somebody who's done public service.
Animal control.
Ah.
I went round and round with Deputy Schofield about a dog situation. Todd happened to be working on the island and couldn't respond. So the sheriff's office called everybody in Saginaw County to get somebody to respond. I wouldn't be surprised if he called one of you, maybe he didn't this time. I want to be clear that despite what the deputies might tell you, you're under absolutely no obligation to respond to an animal control call. It does say that in state law, but it's truly not an expectation. And West Bass backup for Todd is solid. Town of Woolwich knew about it, City of Bath knew about it, Town of Brunswick knew about it. These other ACOs, some of them also have big jobs and cannot always respond when they need to.
So what was the situation?
Dogs in a vehicle with somebody who was not in a good state of mind. And the ACOs didn't necessarily feel safe to retrieve the dogs. So the reason why the sheriff's department doesn't just take care of it is because they don't have their shots, and they don't have authority to handle an animal. So it has to be an animal control officer when it's a domestic animal. But if you do happen to get a random call from somebody, just shut them down and say, you know, we've got it handled, if I'm around, call me. I'll call the ACOs in another community, we'll figure it out.
Speaking of animals, I had an email from a person who's concerned about an overflow of rats.
Health officer.
Health officer.
I think it said to all three of us, but Foster's quite rude.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that.
I referred the county office. Yes, emailed. Okay. Okay.
Meeting schedule.
Yes.
Suzanne will be away on the 20th. I am not available on the 20th. Do you want to meet that evening anyway, or are you okay with skipping a week?
I think we're going to do the opening of the biz on the 27th.
That is correct. And I'm assuming you're going to want to meet on the 13th? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, I thought I had that there as well.
You have a meeting on the 6th.
Yeah.
And then I was assuming the 13th. Skip the 20th and meet the 27th?
Yep, for the...
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So we have 13th, 6th, 13th, 27th.
And we do... And we do have a staff member who is moving on to another opportunity. Carly submitted her resignation effective June 30th. So we will be looking for a new town clerk. And she's going to be missed terribly.
I'm very happy for Carly and demonstrate that this town was left.
She refused to accept the letter.
Right. Chain her to the telephone.
Yes.
Don't go.
Definitely was not an easy decision. I will miss the town people terribly.
Okay, this should acknowledge.
Oh, aw. I'll be a phone call away.
But we didn't answer. She gets to scream from after the 30th.
Right.
The town should acknowledge your service.
Carly, how long have you worked for the town?
Eight years.
Wow. And it was a stroke of luck that you came into the life of this town at the time that you did. We were glad to get you, and we are sad to see you go. And we should have some kind of festive send-off, which you should not have to arrange. I will work with Christine to develop send-off, if that's all right.
Can I ask where you're going?
Yes, I will be a short distance away for the Saginaw District Attorney's Office. You know, I just couldn't handle this long commute anymore. I had to find somewhere a little bit closer.
Congratulations.
Closer.
Stay out of jail.
Five hundred.
So...
Congratulations.
Yes, indeed.
And awesome catch for the Saginaw District Attorney.
Yeah, so we will need a motion on that if you do accept.
And if you don't?
Probably you're going to leave.
I move that we accept the resignation of Carly Perry with thanks for her service and regrets for her departure in my deepest expression of appreciation. Second. All in favor?
She's going to be so happy.
All in favor? With reluctance.
So is it okay with the board if I publish an ad to replace?
Bundle it with lung away.
No, I'm sure it's...
You don't judge Kathy.
We've got, I mean, we've got someone that's doing...
That would be other duties as assigned. Yes, please. And I'll have the deadline be June 27th? Yes. We will receive the election, the primary vote. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for your long notice.
Yeah, that was very important to me, as well as I'm sure the rest of the staff.
Yes. I can't imagine, how are we going to do a brain dump for everything that you have?
Well, the good news is I was hired August 1st, which was two months before Trump's first presidential election. And that was also the year that they legalized marijuana, so it can be done. Keep the faith. And I said, this will be my hardest election ever, and it was my easiest election ever. They've only gotten harder.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, all of this is board of assessors. We have in our packets the outline we processed for examining the prospect of having a seated assessor. And you have the information in your packet that a vote may be held at the annual town meeting or a special town meeting. And the note that main law requires that vote be held at least 90 days prior to the annual meeting at which it takes effect. So if we are going to have a vote to change the nature of selecting the positions, it needs to be 90 days prior to the election in November. Or if we do that, we could have the change to the seated assessor take effect.